Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. I call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. So just as a quick item of news before we get going, we held the school district deliberative session on February 3rd. And the three warrant articles as proposed by the school board were adopted by the voters and then so those will head to the ballot. So our first order of business, let's see, non-public session, we will have a non-public session, but we'll hold that at the end of the public meeting. So first up, we have the principals report.
Okay, thank you Tim. Um, I wrote about three different things in the principals report this month. The first one is under our core value of positive community culture. I'm gonna diverge from what I wrote for just a minute, just to thank the Kensington community for being so incredibly supportive of our local bus driver Betty, who some of you may have seen either on the local news or on our local social media, Betty's pretty much lost everything in a house fire earlier this week. And she's been a bus driver in Kensington for over 17 years and knows way more families in Kensington than I do. And the outpouring for her from our families and our Kensington community has really been just overwhelming really, and she's been so grateful for the support. I had breakfast with her the other morning at the hotel where she's staying and she really just couldn't be more appreciative of our town and the people who have really reached out to ensure that she has what she needs right now. And so I just wanted to pass along that thanks from Betty to our community. I think that fits under positive community culture anyway. I mean, it's really just a testament to our town and what we try to teach our kids about. Pay it forward and when you can help, you help because one day you may be the person in need and it's nice to know that we live in a town where people are willing to help. So that's great.
Becky, could you please convey our condolences to her when you, when you see her next and ask her if there's anything that we can do? Just please let us know.
Yeah, and the GoFundMe that was set up for her by the bus company, I think has close to $6,000 if not more at this point, which is really just incredible and will be so, so helpful for her as she is starting over again. So yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much for mentioning that Becky, that's an important message.
Yeah, well, she's an extended member of our Kensington family, so.
Most of my kids way back when, so yes.
Yep, she hasn't missed many days of work in the last 17 years, I will say that. Um, continuing on, I was just talking a little bit about meaningful learning. And I highlighted some of the studies that some of our students have been doing with Black History Month. I know Dr. Ryan has also sent out some communication around some of the work that's happening in the SAU, but I wanted to just highlight some of the things that our second graders have been doing in particular in studying the Underground Railroad and learning some key vocabulary and some really important people in our history. And then also just highlight too how that learning is transferring into some of their everyday things that they're seeing in life. So it's really great for them to start making connections to what they're learning and what they're seeing. So I'm excited to share that. I also shared just a little bit too about what second grade's doing with some of their science concepts that they're learning. They're learning about common states of matter and making some really, they've made some really great design models for, for toys, including some of these models, the, some of these states of matter. So that was a really great project for them to to construct these items and then reflect on their project descriptions and be able to share that. So those were, that's, that's been a fun unit of study for them as well. So lots happening in our second grade classrooms these days. Under health and wellbeing, I just want to do again, send a message from Nurse Heather to all of our families about what a great job we're doing as, as a community. And you know, students are wearing their masks and our desks are still six feet apart and we're, we're keeping our distance and we're washing our hands and Mr. Brackett's cleaning all the time and families are really doing their part two as well. I know Nurse Heather's in contact with lots of families about COVID tests and getting tests to reassure that symptoms are not COVID symptoms. And I know sometimes that's inconvenient for families, but we really do appreciate everybody following the rules and the, and the suggestions and working with Nurse Heather and keeping everybody, everybody safe. So thank you from her as well. And I also just wanted to highlight some of the work that Carly Lynch had done with us while she was with us. She was the guidance counselor that covered Ms. Eskelen's maternity leave. Ms. Eskelen returned to us this week, so Ms. Lynch is no longer with us, but she was, she, she did a wonderful job with our staff and our students and she organized the Great Kindness Challenge a few weeks ago. And it just really again, helping our kids see and appreciate each other and really just supporting that SEL work that's going on in the building. And so I just wanted to again, say thank you to Carly for the work that she did for the eight weeks that she was covering for Mrs. Eskelen was much, much appreciated. Yeah. A couple other specific items that were under the principals' report, the first piece was cohorting. And a couple of things that I wanted to say under that, first again, I wanted to thank the board for allowing flexibility for parents in families returning to school and returning to cohorts for either from remote learning or from homeschooling. We continue to have students join our different cohorts at times when works into their family, whether they've been waiting for a vaccine or something else. You know, that may not have fit neatly into our, this is the end of our semester schedule and you must come now. Families have definitely appreciated that flexibility of being able to re-enter our cohorts as they're able to. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to let the, the board know that after February vacation, so in March, we are going to modify our outdoor recess expectations and allow our sister cohorts to play with each other outside. So what that would mean is that just the sister cohorts in a grade level, so in first grade, the piggies could play with elephants, the sun could play with shine, the Atlantic could play with the Pacific. So we're just looking at the sister cohorts being able to play with each other outside. We're not mixing grade levels at this point. This is something that we feel that we can do. Well, first of all, the kids have been wanting to do that since November and I've said no, but we do feel like we can safely do this at this time and we're excited to be able to expand their socialization with their peers outside of just their cohort. There still will be no mixing of cohorts inside the building at all. This is just a shift in, at recess. And so they'll be able to see some of their friends from their sister cohorts. They'll still keep their masks on. We're still going to encourage the distancing during their play, but I think they'll be excited to be able to expand that socialization circle at school.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's exciting. The kids are excited.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and if I didn't think we could do it safely, I wouldn't be making the modification, but I absolutely feel point in seeing how respectful the kids are of the rules and of the masking and the distancing that I feel like this is absolutely something that we can do safely with the kids. The next piece on there is the busing update. So at the last meeting, we discussed sort of the waitlist of students on busing. And so we put an all call out to families asking if there were families who maybe didn't need the busing or maybe not every day or could sit with friends. And so from some creative moving around and a couple of families pulling their kids off of the bus because they're able to drive, we were able to accommodate everybody on the waitlist. So that is good news for our busing.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you to those parents too for being flexible. That's fantastic news. Thank you.
Yep, again, our.
Thank you very much to everyone on that because you know, the alternative was either, the alternatives were spending another $25,000 or continuing to leave families off the bus list.
Right.
So it's great that we're able to flexibly find some way to get everyone taken care of. Thank you very much.
And again, I just think it goes to show our community understanding each other and each other's needs and doing what's right for each other. So again, thank you for that. The next item on there is remote schooling. This is something that we started conversations about last, last month. I'd like to just continue that conversation about our remote numbers. And so we can continue to look at that and have some conversations about where we are now as a school and what our needs are currently. After some conversations with some remote families this week, and again, we had another remote student return to us this week. There will be seven students participate, left to participate in our remote schooling. And so we need to think about, you know, how we're going to move forward with that remote schooling model with, with seven students participating. That's very different than the 15 that we had at the beginning of the year. And so I think we just need as a whole school again, need to look at what were our needs in October and what did we need to do to reopen and what are our needs now, three months later? Both of our school community and of our, of our families, because some of our families' needs are changing as well too. So we're in, we're not in the same situation that we were in, in October. So my communication with the remote school families has increased over the, you know, really trying to understand each family's needs and where they are right now, because some of them, them are shifting. Some of our families have been waiting for this vaccine to deploy and waiting for either elderly members of their family to receive the vaccine or those who are, you know, at medical risk. And now that that's starting to happen, there is some comfort level building with some of our remote families about the possibility of returning. And so we just need to continue to look at, are those numbers as they continue to decrease? I know Chris had a come, and I apologize, my dog is barking in the background and I'm sorry. But at least I'm still connected. I know Chris had a conversation with the Newfield School Board about one option that we had proposed last month about combining some of our younger learners with the Newfields younger learners. So Chris, I don't know if you wanted to talk about that conversation.
Thanks Becky. I did follow up with Newfields and they shared, you know, some of the same concerns that you shared about another transition with Kensington and Newfields. They, they want to continue to have that conversation because they're seeing what Newfields, Newfields is seeing, what Kensington's seeing is that their families are returning more to in-person learning rather than a full remote. So as those numbers dwindled down more, what, what some options that we have and you know, Becky and I discussed that further today, we're going to get something, you know, more written so that you can take a look at it about the thinking on how we can support all of our families and students for their, for their best learning environment. But at this time, they, they, they are very willing to work with Kensington. If the situation comes up, they're not opposed to it, but their concern at that meeting was the, another transition for remote students. So they were hesitant to make the move at, at their meeting last month.
So Becky, I have a question about the numbers. So you mentioned that we have seven students who are in remote and we have though, we have two remote cohorts. There's K1 and 2 in one and 3, 4 and 5 in the other. So those seven, how are, how are they distributed? Is it four and three or is it six and one?
Four and three.
Okay.
Am I right that it's actually, it's actually one, like grades one to four. It's not kindergarten and not fifth grade.
There, there is not currently a kindergarten in remote, but there is a fifth grader.
There's a fifth grader. Okay.
So. So that, and that is the, the span makes things tricky. Because you know what, first graders are learning is very different than what fifth graders are learning. And so again, thinking about meeting everybody's needs. It's, it's not so clear cut.
Right. So is, is Newfields, do they have a similar situation? They're K through 2 and 3, 4 and 5?
That is correct. And they do not have any kindergarten students who are a part of their early remote learning group. And they do, they have, I believe it's all fourth graders and possibly 130. They have no fifth graders in their, in their secondary cohort. So it's very similar in groupings ability. I know Suzie and Becky, the principal at Newfields and Becky have had multiple conversations as well. So again, we're, we're looking for solutions. Just want to take into account all of the different you know, scenarios that come up with what we can do and how we can support all of our kids. So we're, we're going to keep working at it. And hopefully, you know, social distancing guidelines may come down, which may help out and vaccines definitely going to help out and testing options are definitely, you know, spinning to help us. So we're getting there. Just, I know it's not as quickly as we'd like to, but we're, we are, Becky and I talk at least a couple of times a week about how do we do this? Because that social emotional piece of getting kids back in is something that's burning all of us. How do we really support all of our kids in person and get to see them and help them out? So we're, we're looking and we're hearing all families and how do we support them?
Thank you.
So I'll throw out a perspective on this. It seems to me that right now we're in a kind of a transitional period. We do have some, the people slowly are transitioning towards our in-person school and the vaccine rollout program is still, it's kind of ongoing and so maybe, maybe it's still a kind of a transitional period for us and perhaps a change is not warranted. Also, it seems that Newfields is also not ready at this time to commit to a, a reorganization of remote schools. So just as a conversation starter, I'll, I'll put that out there.
Well, and Chris, you and I had spoken a few weeks ago and you said you guys were also looking at alternative ideas that could maybe get Ms. Denusis in part-time, you know, with, with this, with the general population. You know, the in-person kids. So I'm, I'm really, I'm really excited to hear all kinds of ideas. And you know, outside of the box thinking on that because we gotta, you know, it, it's just one of those situations where it's going to be hard no matter what.
Yeah, that's a credit to Becky and her staff. They're, they're looking at ways to make this happen. And they heard loud and clear that we, we want to do what's right for all families. Both in-person and remote. So how do we do that with the staff we have and be able to support all of our kids? So that's what we're, we're getting through. We, unfortunately we got cut off because we both had to go to meetings today, but we were in the midst of what about this? What about this? You know, and so Becky and I are going to put something on paper that will give the rationale of how we may be able to do this in a more cohesive way to start at Kensington and focus because, you know, we can't rely on Newfields at this point. So how do we make it happen for Kensington? And I'm, I'm very confident in what we talked about today that we'll have something ready for you to look at and give us feedback for so that we can make this happen.
Great. So would we, would, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to call a special meeting to, once we kind of find a solution to get it going as quickly as possible. So maybe we would do that instead of waiting until March. Is that right?
Yeah, I, again, once we get it on paper and we, we, you know, it's once we get all, because once we put it on paper, then we're going to say, well, what about this? And that's is right. So that's where Becky and I were today, because the plan today was a little bit different than last week. And so we're like, how do we do this better from what we've learned already previously? And how do we support every single one of our kids to the best of our abilities? So that's, that's where we're at. But I'd be glad to have a special meeting to, to get this to you and that would be the, the agenda item. So once we get it down and we can, Becky and I can really rationalize it to be able to give it to you so that it can go out to the community in a rational way, we certainly will.
That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, everybody.
Yeah, it's really just part of our shift too in thinking, you know, three months ago, we were all in the mindset of how do we get the kids back in school? How do we get the kids back in school? And, and now we've been back in school for the kid, with the kids for three months now. And you know, we've been so fortunate to, to stay in this in-person mode and, and we're really, we're seeing what our kids need. We're not guessing. I think they need this, but I don't know because they're on the screen. Like we really know and can see and we're starting to develop different plans moving forward now that, now that our kids are back with us and we see what they can do. And so it's sort of like, like I think what Tim said, we're sort of in that transition. We're not in the get our kids back to school phase anymore. We're, we're, we're in that next phase of, okay, now, now what do we need to do to meet all of our kids' needs, both and remote. I don't suspect that. I mean, there still will be families who at the end of the school year, due to their individual situations, will still need to be remote. And I fully understand and respect that. But like, you know, let's start to take a look at each family individually and how do we help and how do we maintain that learning environment for, for each family?
Okay, great.
Under, under old business is, that says the DHHS guidelines. I'm not sure who's doing that. I just wanted to do a quick reminder about the upcoming vacation or is that going to be covered under guidelines and quarantining and all of that stuff?
No, the DHHS guidelines is my monthly update on community incidence numbers and things like that and where we stand relative to the board's adopted framework for deciding our, our mode of operation. So go ahead, Becky.
No, it's just a reminder, um, you know, we have the vacation coming up. And a reminder that we are still expected if we're traveling outside of New England, that there would be an expectation to, to quarantine. So if you're, I guess I would just encourage if families know that they are traveling outside of New England for vacation, if they could please contact me or Nurse Heather so that we can discuss the quarantining and that sort of thing that would need to happen after they returned.
Just a couple that Tim, it would be the recommendation from the SAU that we would return into in-person learning for those, those students who are on March 1st, that there would not be a mandatory quarantining time. So that's the position the SAU would make a recommendation to all of our boards at this time, that learning would be as they, as they left on next Friday.
Okay. So then if that's the recommendation of the superintendent, unless there's a board member who wants to talk about doing something else, then otherwise we'll move along and that recommendation is what will happen. Okay. And Chris, if you and Becky and the staff manage to settle on some plan that you feel confident about, then that happens before the next meeting, then please make sure to get in touch with me and we can, we can talk about that.
Thank you. We will.
All right. Thank you. Okay, old business, New Hampshire DHHS guidelines. As I mentioned before, this is the monthly update on the incidence numbers. I attempted to get in touch with Chief True, who often has additional up-to-the-minute information on case incidents locally. I was unable to do so today, possibly he's very possibly he's busy.
Can I interrupt for a quick second? Just to say that I spoke with him, I spoke with him two days ago and he said that our numbers are down. He didn't give me a number, but he said the numbers are down and it's looking good. So.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah. So in terms of the statewide and countywide numbers, that those numbers are substantially down. Last month, it looked like they, they were down, but not such that, you know, one would necessarily feel completely confident saying that that was the case, but I think that one can confidently say the numbers, the overall incidence is about half, possibly even less than half of what they were a couple of months ago. And that's true statewide as well as in the county. In terms of the incidence of cases per 100,000, it still remains a substantial level of transmission in the community. However, hospitalizations, those are in the category of minimal. And the, the seven-day total test positivity rate, that's the fraction of tests that are positive, not a fraction of the population. Those are minimal in, in the minimal category statewide and in our county, it has dropped from substantial to moderate. And at least the number, the, the number of active cases as shown on the state website in Kensington, it's somewhere between zero and four. Possibly the chief knows something different, but that's what it shows on the site. So our epidemiological situation has improved. So are there any questions or comments about the guidelines update? No? Okay. New business, so we have none on the agenda. Public input. So Chris, can we open up the, the chat box if folks want to make some comments or post some questions? We can get a look at those. Alright, thanks. Okay, it looks like we have 13 non-panelists attendees today. No questions or comments coming through the chat box. Okay. All right, then. Next up is general correspondence. I do not have any. Chris, did any last minute correspondence come in through you?
Not, not in our office. No, Tim.
All right. Business and financial and Molly is here. Molly is juggling three meetings, but her timing is good. She's with us right on time.
Yep. So you'll be pleasantly surprised in your board pack. So the last time we met, there was approximately $48,000 of remaining expenses, which is not encumbered yet. That's now jumped up to $135,857.88 in your board pack. And the three main drivers for that, um, when we did the budget last year, we were not aware that psych, PT and OT were going to be grant funded. So we have relieved those encumbrances for those three positions. And that made up all but $4,000 of the change. So those were the major drivers behind that. And again, this is just the expense side of the house. So we do have the additional COVID money coming in revenue as well as an additional round of S R money that will be coming our way hopefully shortly. Did anybody have any questions on the financial?
No, I, I didn't. But yeah, I was, I was very glad to see that our numbers had jumped up by some 85 or 88. Yeah, $88,000. Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I know Tim, you did have some questions last time about the transportation. So for first student, we do still have the full amount encumbered. And the reason we haven't unencumbered that yet is in the off chance, say the high school and middle school have to jump remote and we have to go back to completely single runs. I didn't want to put all our eggs in one basket and relieve that just yet. So we will anticipate some savings there as long as we can stay on track. Some buses are double run and some are single run. And we've divvied that up equally across the district. So while Kensington has two buses running, one, you're being charged a double run rate. So while Kensington has two buses running, one, you're being charged at a double run rate, the other is being charged at a single run rate. The reason why is there's not as many buses at the middle and high school. So there's not as many buses to share the double run rate with. But as we get closer to the end of the year, hopefully, we'll be able to relieve some of that encumbrance as well.
Okay, thank you for that update.
And then the only other thing is we have included all the manifests. So we, if there's any questions on the manifest, or if you have a motion to approve those as well.
Yeah, I just had one question and I, there's so many of them, I forgot I was looking at them earlier. But there was one incurred cost and I'm assuming is we are responsible for security detail for the deliberative session. It was a line item for security, $500.
Do you remember which manifest?
Hold on, I'll have to go through them. There's so many of them. I saw it and then I'm scrolling around as we're going through everything. So.
Or if you wanted to send me that after as well, or Becky, if you had an answer.
Is it the lobby guard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that's a software. Yeah, that's not that what's not an actual police detail. That's the the software that we use when we're checking visitors into the building, not that that's getting used much these days, because we really don't have visitors, but that is.
Oh, that's what that is. Thank you. I was kind of curious. That's all I had.
There'll be no charge for for any police presence at our deliberate assessment, Jonathan?
I wasn't positive, but you can see why I asked the question, why I saw that. I hadn't seen it before, so I had to ask.
The chief came there on his on his own goodwill. It would have been actually Exeter that would we would have had to have paid for if they, we did have an officer on site since it was in Exeter. But the Kensington Police were there on their own goodwill and we appreciate their presence at the meeting. So they were just there for support.
Okay, super.
Okay, are there any other questions about any items on the manifest? Jenny, it looks like you were speaking, but you're on mute.
Yes, sorry. Molly, do we need to come in and sign these or is are we okay?
Sorry, I'm mute myself as well. Note is if you can make an emotion to approve the manifest in the board pack, then if you all approve it, then we can use the meeting minutes to document it instead of you having to come in.
So I'll make a motion to approve the manifest as written.
In the board packet.
In the board packet.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Jenny, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the manifests that were included in the board packet, including the payroll manifests and all the other items, those are approved. Okay, anything else on the business side?
Nope, that's all I had.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Molly.
Onto the minutes. So on January 13th, we had a public meeting and we have public meeting minutes for those. Are there any suggested amendments for the public meeting minutes?
I have.
Go ahead.
I have two. So on page fifty-seven of the board packet, which I believe is the the end, it's that last sentence of the principal's report. I would like to please change the word gauge to the words to gather. Let me find it. Yeah, so so the board agreed not to make a decision and asked Mrs. Rule to continue gauge information. So maybe or maybe gauging would be fine. I guess, should we talk about that one first or should I give you my other one? It's small.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Anything should it just say gathering information?
That, yeah, that's fine. I just, I, it's, you know what happened? When I spoke it out loud just now, I heard it and realized that it was supposed to be gauging. Okay. The other thing is, is just that there was public input that day from Jess Costa and her name is written down as DeCosta. So just, I just thought we should actually, you know, call her by the right name.
Yeah, I noticed that one, too. Her name is Jessica Costa, C O S T A. Okay, any others? All right, well, then I will move to approve the January 13th public meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the January 13th public meeting minutes are approved as amended. We also had a non-public meeting and there's January 13th non-public meeting minutes. Are there any suggested amendments to the non-public minutes?
None.
None.
Okay, then I move to approve the non-public meeting minutes of January 13th as written.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the January 13th non-public meeting minutes are approved as written. Onto the committee reports. So the policy committee, Jonathan?
None.
Okay, safety and security.
Yes, we had a meeting and I actually got to go to it this time. And thank you, John, for continuing to forward those emails to me to let me know. I spoke with Esther and I think I think it's sorted now. So just briefly, we spoke about the vaccination cited EHS, which is going very smoothly. Matters relating to SROs and their MOUs, which doesn't affect us personally. And then this is two, two important things I thought are pertinent. The SAU's Social Sentinel Program is working really well. And that's that's happening at the upper school levels. But I'm glad to hear that and I think that it's fantastic that they have implemented it. But I really loved hearing that as we're moving out of the immediate physical safety concerns, the SAU is really focusing on mental health, social emotional learning, SEL, and trauma support. And they're just putting a lot of focus on that right now. And there was some information about them getting Lynn Lyons to to contribute some curriculum ideas and some training, which is fantastic. She is, she is incredible at what she does. So I thought that was really great and I, as a parent, really appreciate the focus on that. And just as a citizen, you know, human living here, I think that's important. And then also, as teachers get vaccinated and the CDC guidelines get revised, it may allow for, they're talking about how it may allow for a reduction from, you know, in 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 social, in spacing and distancing, which could really, a safe reduction in distancing, which could really open up some doors and some options in terms of how we're doing things. And and I just, I thought that was really great news. And so.
It could literally open up some doors.
Literally open up some doors. That's right.
Indeed.
And that's about it.
Jenny, Lynn Lyons actually began her work with all of the school counselors. I know they all had a webinar with her today and Kelsey Eskelen participated in that from our school and was super pumped at the end of it. So that work with Lynn Lyons has already begun.
That's fantastic. I want to audit those just because I think she's great. I'm a fan.
Okay, thanks for that update, Jenny. Are there any questions or comments for Jenny? No? Okay. All right, Jenny, how about the Board of Selectmen?
Um, I haven't heard anything in those meetings that have pertained to the school, except for the deliberative session stuff, but that's behind us now.
Okay. The Joint Chairs, there has been no Joint Chairs meeting, Superintendent Evaluation. There's been those meeting or special activity, although I can mention that it is likely, though not yet finalized, that the Joint Board will meet on November 1st to consider the mid-year Superintendent Evaluation. That is not finalized, just a heads up to my fellow.
Next November?
November.
Did I say November?
You said November.
I was a little confused by that.
I have no idea why I said November. But what I meant, what I meant was March 1st.
March, okay. That's did you say that that is happening or it might happen?
I, it, it's in the works and it's, it may or may not happen. But March 1st, maybe I was thinking about the March election and then somehow jumped to November as an election. I don't know.
It's called COVID fog, Tim.
COVID fog. Tired of being.
Exactly.
All right. So I don't have anything further on those. Pupil-related matters, I don't know of any.
Only thing I know is Miss, it's not that it's a matter, but Ms. Culver was just giving you the heads up that her third grade persuasive letters will be coming to the board. This is something that they generally do each year. And so your persuasive letters from our third graders will be to you shortly.
Okay.
I get asked about this every night at dinner.
Those are always fun and interesting. All right. Personnel, so other than the adjournment, the only item is left is personnel. And that's something that we will need to handle in a non-public session. So for the the folks attending in the general public, this is really the end of the the public segment of our meeting. Thank you very much for for joining us. So for now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we I guess, as soon as, soon as we are by ourselves, I'll make a motion and we'll go into non-public session. Thank you very much, folks. All right. So let's see, I move to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, section C. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question, however, Tim. There's an SAU sixteen board report stuck in the end of this, which is the superintendent.
Public session, the non-public session is ended. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Jenny?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and that means that we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, good night.